Hey Kelly.
Hi.
Everyone else, we just finished up interviews for the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals.
Oh, how did it go?
Pretty well. We're recording now, so I'll just let that continue. Everyone else will jump in any second now, so we'll get going with our meeting in just a minute.
Do you want to pause it while we're waiting for everybody?
I suppose I can do that. Alright, so we are now recording. Alright, so welcome everybody to the May 14 Village Board Meeting. We're starting about a minute and a half late, so I appreciate your patience. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence like we usually do. Everyone can stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which it stands. One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Is Desiree on?
She says she's waiting, I guess, to be let in.
Alright, I'm on.
We're getting let in?
Maybe you can help me.
I don't have a waiting room on this.
Um, well.
Kirsten, you're there.
Hello.
I am here.
You're here. We just turned off everybody's video.
And unmuted everybody that's not directly in the meeting just yet.
You'll be unmuted later for comment periods.
Alright, um, well, I don't want to delay the meeting, so Kelly, if you wouldn't mind, you're doing transcription anyway.
Yeah, I'm doing the transcript, so the minutes won't be a problem.
Okay, alright, so we'll just continue moving on then. Alright, so the first item is public agenda, excuse me, public comment on agenda items only. So I'm going to unmute everybody and I'll just call one at a time off the list of participants that we have to see if you have any comments. So, uh, let's see, Craig Brady, you have any comments?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. I will mute you again. iPhone, I don't know who that is. Do you have any comments? Alright, moving on. Mrs. Perino?
Um, I do not have comments. I know Chris has comments, but he can't connect.
Chris?
Go on with you, Kirsten. Go, let him go on with you.
It's comments on agenda.
Yeah.
Comments on agenda items only.
I don't want it. I don't mind it.
Kirsten, do you have any?
I'm gonna go sit down and figure it out.
Okay, I would mute him now.
Okay, yeah, already done. Mr. DeLuca?
No, sir, I'm good.
Thank you. Robin?
Oh, but Neil does.
Mr. Kraus?
Hello.
Shoot.
Yeah, I had, I had comments on the, I'm trying to just find, find it here was the, I don't want to get into anything on that might lead with a public hearing, but it's like water quality protection overlay.
Okay, well, we're gonna be having a brief statement on that really, and then we're going to have an attorney-client session on that after our regular meeting. So there's really not much we're gonna talk about with that publicly. Is that a specific question, Jill?
Yeah, guys make, this was first, we, I think we went to a public hearing in, in 2018 on this.
That's correct, in February of 18.
And the attorney, and I have his card here, we used David Gordon.
Gordon, yeah.
And he was up in New Pulse.
Correct.
And he was supposed to come back with some work that he had done on it, and I didn't hear anything after that. And I just urged the board is, I think this is, I think, I thought it was very important at the time. As a matter of fact, I thought the majority of the board at that time thought it was very important. And I would hope the board would, the new board here would also think it's very important and move, and move this ahead.
Okay, thank you.
And then I, the other comment I had, and it was under new business, it was a request for a fee waiver for the, for the, I think, the town, for where the courts are now.
Yes.
And I would ask that the board give that serious consideration, because it's very similar to the suit that the town filed against the village with, I think, with the reservoir and stuff is, it's all, the money is all coming out of the same pocket to pay for it. Whether, whether the, whether the money moves from the town to the village, or it just stays with the town, I think we're all going to see, one way or the other, the taxpayers are gonna pay for it.
Alright, anything else, Mr. Kraus?
Not, that, that's it.
Thank you.
We're just, we're just gonna sit here and watch the rest of the meeting.
Roger that. Okay, you're muted. Sandy, did you have anything?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so I think that was everybody. The only people that are not muted now are board members, except Andrew, you looks like you muted yourself, right? Where is he?
And I just unmuted.
Okay, just making sure I didn't have you muted. Okay, so, I'm sorry? Was that you, Des?
No, but I'm, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, we hear you. Hear you and see you.
Yeah, no, the link that I was sent was for a different meeting, so I didn't have this link.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to administrative business. So I'd like a motion and a second to accept receipt of the minutes of the meeting held on April 23rd.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so Andrew made the motion.
I'll second it.
Tara seconded it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay. Approval of abstract. I'm gonna request a motion and a second to approve that extract number 23 containing vouchers 191898 through 191954 totaling $140,675.49.
Nope, that's not correct.
Okay.
It's abstract 23, contains vouchers 191898 through 191955, and it totals $141,051.98. We had a last-minute addition.
Okay. Well, with that correction, can we get a motion and a second?
What was the last-minute addition?
Desiree, what was the last-minute addition?
Was the McKenzie bill, Tara. What I, I discussed with you?
Fire chase, fire chase vehicle, yeah, starter, I believe.
Yes.
Um.
Thank you for getting that done, Des.
Yep.
Okay, so can we have a motion and a second?
If I have questions, can I ask them now, or do I make the motion?
When we do the discussion phase.
Just, okay. I'll make the motion.
Okay, Tara made the motion, Chris seconded it. Okay, so I will ask any discussion, and I know Tara, you have a question.
Yeah, just clarification. So, the truck that was purchased for the building department, the highway department, can we talk about that? Because I, I didn't see the voucher in the backup, because I wasn't the one who was at Villachall, I guess it was Andrew, or Jesus. Can, can we talk about that timeline? Because I'm trying to.
Yeah, so that vehicle was ordered, well, first of all, we're working off the budget that's finishing up this month.
Yeah.
We all know that. Second of all, that vehicle was ordered before the holidays, I think even before Thanksgiving, definitely before Christmas. And that vehicle was purchased as part of our regular capital equipment replacement policy. That was already budgeted and covered? Oh, yeah.
I think you're a little over, but there were, I know we're gonna have modifications for, to talk about tonight as well.
Yeah, we have some budget modifications coming up.
Okay, um, so, because I just wanna, you know, we, we talked about briefly watching what we spend considering the climate, which I know we all, we all know. Are there any other large expenditures expected in this? I mean, I know the fiscal year is ending, but, but coming up within the next couple of months that we should know about and maybe try to talk about before?
Let me address the first part of your statement slash question, if you will. We are, our fiscal year starts, it starts in June 1st. So we're, we're finishing up the, and I know you know this, but we're finishing up the last fiscal year. A lot of these budget items that we've been passing and talking about and approving have been, as Jesus pointed out, budgeted for the 19 to 20 budget year, for the fiscal year. And we are finishing up those expenditures. And secondly, with regard to the reason we wanted to slow down and pause capital expenditures, obviously that's because of sales tax and mortgage tax revenue and the projected losses in those areas. Now, we did just, I believe, Des, we did get the check, right?
Yes, we got it.
So we did get our last quarter sales tax check, and it was actually over what we had budgeted for in terms of revenue by around $12,000. So in terms of spending on the last budget, we're still doing pretty well with that. Now, it was my intent and my goal to see us dramatically slow down capital equipment expenditures as opposed to other types of expenditures that are contractually based or things of that nature, starting with the new fiscal year in June 1st. But we've been paying close attention to what we've been doing prior to the end of the existing fiscal year. Does that make sense? Did that answer your question? I, I'm not sure if.
Yeah, it just, it did. I just, you know, in the future, maybe a heads up, because.
Heads up about what?
About what's coming. That, I didn't know until I got the abstract that we had ordered something, I understand it's budgeted for, but that doesn't necessarily mean we have to spend it. But if it was ordered, I understand it's been delivered and, I mean, you can't really undo that. Just because while we're in line with last year's budget and, and sales tax, we're very uncertain what's coming.
Correct.
So holding on to money that we could hold on to isn't a bad idea. So I'm just, that's all. So if we know of anything.
Disagreement at all. No disagreement, but this started before COVID.
No, I understand. Yes, Desiree.
I understand what you're saying, Tara, but how are you gonna implement that? So as the liaison to the building department, you should be speaking to Gary about his purchases. And as liaison to each of the departments that the four of you represent, you should be speaking to them, because we don't have a, we don't have a policy in place where you approve purchases before they're made. Once the budget's adopted, people have their budget in place, and these items are approved at the budget time. Now, we have told them that with the new budget, a lot of things are on hold, for example, the fire chase vehicle, Gary's purchase of his software, Rob's purchase of the $220,000 we budgeted for his, that big truck he needs. And we're gonna need to revisit, I'm sorry?
I thought it was 320.
I thought it was 220.
220.
Yes, 220. And we're gonna revisit that regularly as things start coming in, if they start coming in, but.
As long as it's on the radar. I, I understand what you're saying. You can't, you can't push the button every time something comes up. Then you're, you're really limiting the department head's flexibility. I get that.
Correct.
And I'm not trying to do that at all, but.
Okay.
You know, in terms of understanding where the future lies, you know, I know we approved the budget that was before COVID, our budget coming up. So.
Correct.
You know, I know that, Tim, you've been diligent with speaking to the department heads. I just wanted to make sure to reiterate that. That's all.
Absolutely, and that's what I was just gonna say. I mean, we have, at the very least, monthly department head meetings, and I speak to the department heads at least a couple of times each week. And what we're doing is being very cognizant of what capital expenditures they have upcoming, and we talk about each one. Most of them, they're not even gonna bring to our attention. And what I mean by that is they're not even gonna bring up as an option.
Well, because it's, it's normal business, and I get that.
But those that they do under the course of normal business, the things that they truly need, we're making a decision on a case-by-case basis to even put into the abstract. And then you guys obviously have the ability to review the supporting documentation and sign off or not sign off on those vouchers. So I think we have a pretty good checks and balances system, and we're going to be even more cognizant about those capital expenditures with the new budget, as you said, that we just passed. Now, just to reiterate what we talked about, I believe, in the previous meeting and maybe even the meeting before that, just so everyone is aware, we have for the next fiscal year budgeted $800,000 for sales tax revenue and $225,000 for mortgage tax revenue. Now, obviously, the first fiscal quarter, which is going to correspond unfortunately with how long the Woodbury Common, which I consider the economic engine of Orange County, has been shut down, as well as the gallery in Middletown and so on. That's going to correspond with our first expected check for the COVID season, if you will. So I don't know how long that's gonna go on. I don't know what it's, nobody does. Nobody knows what it's gonna look like once we hit Phase 2, I believe, is when retail can come back after the state unpauses. But as far as I'm concerned, I'm looking at that entire year's revenue for those two line items and thinking that it's in jeopardy. So from my perspective, and I'm pretty sure from everyone else on the board's perspective, that's what we're thinking about, and that's what we're looking at in terms of what's available for fund balance and what we can control in terms of spending on capital equipment and what we can push back to subsequent years. That makes sense?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Des.
I didn't, just a reminder, the abstract are things that have already been purchased.
Yeah.
If, if, and Tara, you bring up a great point, and that's why I recommended as liaisons for your departments that you've been assigned to, you may want to touch base with those department heads and say, you know, let me know what you have coming up so that I can speak to the board about the feasibility of whether it should be purchased or not, kind of thing.
Thank you.
You know, the abstract is an after fact.
Yeah.
Okay, so is there any other discussion on the motion and the second to approve the abstract, Desiree?
No.
That's right.
Not for me.
Okay, then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, moving on then.
Tim, could you just check the lobby? See if there's anybody waiting?
There is no waiting room for this meeting.
Okay, okay.
There can't be.
Everyone comes right into this meeting. We did that because, with the interviews before. Alright, so I'm gonna look for a motion in a second to adopt the 2020 to 2021 holiday schedule. We have a series of dates. If everybody would like, I can read them out, but everybody has them. So as presented by the village clerk, I'd like a motion and a second.
I'll make that one.
I'll second it.
So that was Tara, and then Andrew made the second. Any discussion?
One question.
Yes, ma'am.
Why is a floating holiday a designated day?
Uh, because, I'm sorry, I was answering your question.
I'm sorry, shouldn't it float to be used whenever somebody wants to use it?
Well, we've always, that's, it's always been designated so that it's not have to be tracked individually by different people.
Okay.
And it's usually designated as when a holiday falls on a Thursday, it's usually that Friday, or if the holiday falls on a Tuesday, we make it the Monday. This particular calendar year, all of your holidays are on a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, or Monday, so then when that happens, it defaults to the day after Easter.
Got it.
It just makes it easier for tracking purposes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, anyone opposed? I'm asking about opposition, only to be absolutely clear on who voted aye, because we're doing a Zoom conference. Okay, so now we have some resolutions with regard to unpaid water levies. So looking for a motion and a second to approve the resolution as presented by the village clerk to the levy of 757 delinquent water bills from the Consolidated Water Fund that totals $137,386.08. The complete list is on file in the village clerk's office.
Nobody?
Anybody?
No.
So we're looking for a motion and a second to re-levee the delinquent water bills. This is normal business.
Do you want me to explain what this is? Because if we don't, if we don't, okay, these are people who did not pay their water bill at all for the entire year, and it gets re-leveeed onto their town, on their village taxes in June that the tax collector collects to make their account whole. If we don't re-levee it, we don't get this money.
I get what it is, and I have a huge issue with it, so I don't, I don't know, when do you want to discuss it, not discuss it? What do you want to do?
Well, as.
Get motion and then.
Exactly. So we have two choices here. We can either do a motion and a second.
I'll second.
Okay, so that was Andrew and then Jesus, correct?
No, it was Tara.
Okay, Tara and Jesus. Alright, so now, so then let's have some discussion.
Alright, I'll start. This, where we are in the hardship that people are facing, this is not the time to be levying anything for any unpaid bills. We should be putting this off and not doing this. I mean, I'm like, I've done this as well for my company. We have stopped all collection activities, all late fees and everything else, because right now is not the time to be going after people. And during a pandemic, when people are worried about putting food on the table, worrying about paying their next bill, yeah, mortgage bill or rent bill, this is not the time to be going after people for late fees or levying their property. So I'm completely 100% against doing this.
Oh, this is the whole year? What was the timeframe?
This is from the first billing in June of 2019 through the billing of February 2020. It ended February 28th of 2020. So before this happens, I will tell you that because this is a regular thing, and it's, the file has already been sent to the county and printed on the tax bills. So we'd have to, we'd have to tell the county to reprint and take it off all of the tax bills.
I get it's a regular thing, but it shouldn't be gone and printed.
Well, because you have to, you have to adopt the most.
Be able to get it some other time. It would basically be almost a write-off for certain people and not other certain people, because it's statutory. I'm not sure that you would have the opportunity to say, let's pause on that now and ask for it again later. And it's something that actually, I know, it, like you said, it's, it's hard to ask people for money now, but I'm not sure that you can ask for it again later. That's my only thing. I, I would have to look into that, but.
And it's not like.
We table this, and we pull this to the next meeting?
We can't, because the next meeting's not till May 28th, and the tax bills will get mailed on that day or the next day. So really, this is the last particular meeting that this can go on. Also, this isn't, these are, for lack of a better word, people who every year pretty much don't pay their water bill, because when it goes on their taxes, it then be, for lack of a better phrase, becomes a write-off when they do their taxes, because it's on their tax bill. When it's on the individual water bill, they don't get it as a tax write-off like they would with property taxes. Does that make sense to everybody who does taxes?
No, the salt deduction lately, that can't be anybody under 10 grand or in this area, but whatever.
Well, that's above my pay grade, but I mean, I, I have the list. It's comparable to previous years, the amount. It's not like it changes much. I, if, if we don't put it on the taxes, what is your solution to getting this money? Because then you'll have nobody paying water bills, and then I, I don't, I don't know what the solution is then.
I, I understand that, and I'm, I'm fully aware of that, and I'm, I deal with water bills that are in the hundreds of millions of dollars. I, I know, I know what I'm saying. This now is not the time.
Kelly, what is the statute? You said it's statutory. That it, that it becomes a lien?
That it gets rolled over on their taxes. I don't have it right in front of me. I could pull it up and have it for you later in the meeting, but I don't have it right in front of me now.
Okay, no.
Any other discussion before we call the vote?
It's 100,000.
Alright, so considering the amount of discussion, Des, I'm gonna ask you for a roll call on this vote, please.
Okay, Mayor Egan?
I vote aye.
Trustee Burke?
Aye.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Jacomoza, Maza?
Aye.
Trustee Gomez?
Aye.
Trustee Graziano?
Nay.
Okay, thank you. So, we have one more for the Andor Park District. So I'm gonna ask for a motion in a second to approve the resolution that was presented for Andor Park for the levy of 22 delinquent water bills from Water Number 6 Fund with, again, with Andor Park that totals $3,264.85. And again.
I'll make the motion.
Excuse me, Jesus, I'm sorry. And again, the complete list is on file in the village clerk's office. So Jesus made that motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
It was Andrew. Any discussion?
No.
Okay, Des, can you do a roll call, please?
I sure can. Mayor Egan?
Aye.
Trustee Burke?
Aye.
Trustee Jacamaza?
Aye.
Trustee Gomez?
Aye.
Trustee Graziano?
Nay.
So before you move on to the next topic, because this is an issue that just came up, there has been some circulation from NICOM about, with regards to the late fees for property taxes, if people don't pay their property taxes on time during the month of June, which is when we collect our village taxes. Pending we're not open on time. It's only, I, I don't, you don't have the authority to waive that statutory late fee, but you can, I believe there's a effort going on, and maybe Kelly, you know about this, or possibly you don't, that the villages are trying to get the governor to waive the fee. So in case this topic comes up next month, I wanted to let you guys know that as well.
And if something does get actually set in stone and not just discussions about it, I'll have that for you at your next meeting. Or prior to your next meeting.
Okay, alright, I'll move on then. We have a series of three budget modifications that we need to make. You all have the detail. I'll summarize each one as I ask for the motion. So I need a motion and a second to approve a modification to the budget of the Consolidated Sewer Fund totaling $24,250. We're increasing and decreasing different line items in that budget, excuse me, in that modification. Des, do we have to read these out?
You don't, you don't have to if you don't want to, but if you'd like me to explain it so that the board's aware, because we don't really do budget modifications very.
I think it'd be a good idea, considering the discussion before. Thank you.
So the way the comptroller's report works, they only do point one, which is all personnel, point two, which is all equipment, and point four, which is all contractual expenses. We go the step further. We break it down to point 401, 402, 403, 404, for our own individual accountability. As you know, every year I have to file a report with the comptroller's office with our financial actuality that occurred during the fiscal year. In order to do so, we like to be in the black instead of the red on line items. So instead of doing budget modifications every meeting, we try to do them every half year, so we usually do them in January, February, when it's right before budget time, and then we do it again as the year ends, which is May. So this particular meeting, I put together all of the line items that have been in the red, or I know will be going to be in the red as of the end of April. This will correct that. There will be another budget modification in June for the current fiscal year, so June will be next fiscal year, but it'll be for this fiscal year, to finalize all that, so that when you end your fiscal year, you're, there's no red in your budget. Of trustees' report, treasurer's report that I send you. So that's what this does. It just fixes any, any type of over expenditures. Why are they over expenditures? It could be a number of reasons. Things could have come in higher than expected, lower than expected for the ones that we are taking the money from to cover the expense and whatnot. Two of them, I did put explanation footnotes on for you so that you could understand those, one of which is the foil fees. I can't predict how many foil copies we'd have to make, but it is a wash, because it's paid for by the applicant, not by us, and that's shown in the clerk fee revenue line item. And the really big one is the comptroller had contacted me, and we need to recognize the actual chip expense on its own line item. We've been recognizing it in a different line item, so I'm separating that out, and that's why it looks so big. It's really not. It's there. It's just showing it in a different line item.
Alright, so that, thank you, Desiree, for that explanation. That was the explanation. I just, I'd like to do a motion and a second, and then any discussion that we'd like to have. So Jesus with the motion.
I'll second.
That was Chris with the second. Any discussion or further questions? Okay.
Yeah, I do have questions. Sorry. This will be for you, Desiree.
Sure.
So are they typically this large, this many accounts that have to be adjusted? Is it usually, I know you say you do it twice a year, but is it usually?
Yes, they are, because we only do it twice a year. If you choose, I could do it every time it happens, but it really only matters when I do the month, the annual report at the end of the year, so that's why we try to just do it when it happens. Because otherwise, some items, like, for example, and this is just an example, Rob with his blacktop, if he can get more roads done, because he didn't spend some, like, this year, he didn't spend a whole lot of money on salt, because we didn't have a whole lot of snow, so he could get a little bit more roads done. So I would, if we do the modification as it happens, you'll be constantly doing the modification, so we just try to do it all at once. It just makes the bookkeeping easier. I'm sure you can understand.
No, I'd rather you do it once. I, I don't, I don't like it every time, because you don't usually look at a budget monthly. You do like an annual or semi-annual.
Right, I look at it monthly, just so you guys know, and I give you that report monthly.
Yes, we get it. Thank you.
Yeah, but yes, doing the modifications for, you know, entry-wise, it's easier to do it on a regular schedule. That's why I usually do it February, right before we do the budget, and then in May, when the year's ending.
I have one question about something, two items on here, though. Should we be spending 70,000? Why wasn't that spent?
Okay, we are, we are on, that's on.
The $235,000 one.
We're not on that one yet.
We haven't done that one.
Oh, we have to do separately? I'm sorry. Yes.
That's okay.
I have no questions on the water one. Alright.
Any further discussion or questions on, I'm sorry, any further discussion or questions on the first budget modification?
No.
First one, no.
Okay, then all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Next one, a motion in a second to approve the budget modification for Water Six Andor Park Fund totaling $1,050.
I'll make that motion.
It was Chris.
I'll second it.
That was Andrew with the second. Discussion questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Motion in a second for the third one of the general fund totaling $235,461.
You skipped over the consolidated water.
Did I?
Yep.
Oh, I apologize. I didn't have the space there, my bad. So need a motion in a second to approve the consolidated water adjustment of $18,050.
I'll make that.
Jesus with the motion.
I'll second it.
Chris was the second. Discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Now to the water.
The general fund.
Okay. Tara, you had a question about the streetlight and you said.
Yeah, just curious because I don't know what, yeah, 70,000.
We are decreasing that by 70,000 because we finished our streetlight upgrade. So all the streetlights now are LED.
Green, okay.
I think there's maybe, maybe six or seven that are still needing to get done, one by Jesus's house, which is on the list. But pretty much all 800 of our streetlights, except for, like I said, those few, have been upgraded. So because we didn't know O and R's timeline, we still had a budget as if they were the sodium or the halogen.
Okay, timeout. Did we do Andor Park? Did we vote on Andor Park?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So we didn't get the motion in the second on the general fund yet.
Correct.
That's what we're talking about.
I know, but we, I'm sorry, I'm just.
Oh, I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
That was Jesus with the second. Okay, so now let's have discussion on the.
Was there another question on that, Tara?
The service award program for 25,000.
Okay, so the service award program is the pension fund for your fire department and it all based on how many members you have. And we have to estimate that because we don't know how many new members will be or how many members will drop out or how many members will age out. So it's an estimate that we put in there based on the previous three years and we paid the bill already and that's how much we were overestimated by. So that's why I took money from there to cover the other, other over expenditures.
Okay.
Again, it's hard to estimate some of the things because you don't know how many members are going to be, how many new members are going to be, so.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Anyone opposed? Okay. So now we'll move on to old business. So we're going to have a brief discussion on introductory local law number one of 2018 entitled Water Quality Protection Overlay. So as Mr. Kraus pointed out earlier during questions with regard to the agenda items, this introductory local law was first introduced in the fall of 2017. There was a public hearing on this law on February 22nd, 2018, and we did, we as the board then did not take any further action for a variety of reasons, which we are going to be discussing in attorney-client session in a little while. So after this meeting is adjourned, we're going to be seeking legal advice from Kelly to determine the status of the law and what steps, if any, we will need to take to continue pursuing this law. So with that said, of course, if anybody wants to have discussion now, we can do that. Just keep in mind, a lot of the things we're going to talk about have to be done in attorney-client session. Chris, did you just nod your head yes?
Yeah, I just want to say, I think this is a, having read through the entire folder of this and looking at the law, I think this is a great law. I think it's something that, you know, we've been looking forward to doing as far as protecting our resources and our land in the village. And I'm in 100% agreement with the law as written and I would like to get it on the agenda for next week to vote on it.
Okay, we're going to talk about why I think we can't do that just that quickly, but we're going to have to do that in attorney-client session. Was there any comment, any other comment before we move on with the agenda?
No, I'm in a complete agreement with CJ on this. I think that the law is in good shape as is and it's ready to move forward. We'll talk about it more after the meeting, but I think it exemplifies what the residents of Woodbury want us to be doing, protecting our waterways and such. So absolutely, I got to agree with CJ 110%.
I absolutely agree with what you guys are saying with regard to the intent of the law. I just think we need to clarify a few things and again, we'll talk about that. Tara, Jesus, any comments?
I, I think the law, it's a great, in concept, it's great. I'm, I'm interested to hear what Kelly has to add. And also, Tim, you said you had some reservations as well, so.
Not reservations, just comments and.
Comments, sorry.
There are reasons why we did not pursue this back then and there are reasons why it was a stagnant file for such a long time.
That's what I'm interested in learning.
Absolutely, and I have answers for you because I was there, as, as was Desiree.
Good. So looking.
We're definitely going to talk about that.
Okay.
Jesus?
More than we do need on the books. Move us forward.
Okay. All right, so let's move on to the next agenda item under old business, and that's a decision for introductory local law number two of 2020 entitled Zone Change Procedures. So Desiree, a question for you. Have there been any written comments received since the hearing was closed on April 23rd?
There has not.
There have not been. Okay, so with no written comments received, I'm looking for a motion in a second to adopt local law number five of 2020 entitled Zone Change Amendment Procedures by amending Chapter 310 zoning and Chapter 65 taxpayer protection with the Village Codebook as printed in the handouts that you've all received.
I'm going to make that motion.
I'll second.
So that was Andrew and Tara with the motion in the second. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Egan?
Aye.
Trustee Burke?
Aye.
Trustee Jacamaza?
Aye.
Trustee Gomez?
Aye.
Trustee Graziano?
Aye.
Hey. So moving on to new business. So we have a renewal of the energy rate lock-in contract and agreement. Des, would you mind reviewing the rates for us?
I, I sure can. Does anybody want a little history? Are you guys all good?
No, we're good.
Actually, you know what? For the audience, why don't you provide a little history of what we're talking about?
Okay, so this is something that we do not annually because it contracts usually for two or three years, but it's buying our electrical energy from a person, from a party other than Orange and Rockland because it's cheaper than paying Orange and Rockland. Sometimes Orange and Rockland may be cheaper, but usually they happen then. So our consultant, M and R Energy Resources Corporation, who we actually found through the Orange County because they use her, this company as well, reached out to me and told me that she feels now would be a really good time to renew this particular contract because the rates are quite low. And as you see, I emailed you this morning and I had to do that, like I explained, because they change daily. The rate is even lower than what we are paying now. So she shopped us out to two suppliers, included all of our accounts because we have added accounts since the last time we signed this two years ago. And her projection is to save us, the projection is we'll be saving us $24,392 a year if by doing a 24-month contract with Constellation, which is actually the company we currently use, you've seen their vouchers. And the rate for 24 months is 0.05706. We are currently paying 0.06556 per kilowatt hour. Or you can choose a 36-month, which is 0.6138, but she didn't give me projections on that, just on the 24-month because that's what she's recommending you guys do. Any questions?
Okay, so we have to decide the term, right, Des?
Yeah, so the new account, if you decide to go to 24 months, the new accounts would start next month, June, because they're currently not on a cheaper policy, cheaper rate policy. And the existing accounts on the list, which is a majority of our accounts, I think all but seven, would be effective November 2020.
So we can't do a motion until we decide on the term. So do we want to do 24 months or 36 months?
Numbers with 36?
Those are the choices, right, Des?
Choices, we, we, and normally she recommends a 24 because of the market fluctuating. But, you know, if you want to do 36, you can.
No, I, I personally, I agree with 24. I wouldn't want to do more than that, but obviously I'm, it's, it's at the pleasure of the rest of the board what they want to do.
Now, look at, you know, what the commodity pricing is. I mean, oil just hit a low in, in, in per barrel price. Your electric generation costs are going to be the lowest you're going to probably have in the next several years. So you have a choice now of hedging if you want to lock in for a longer period or lock in for a shorter period. Betting that in 24 months from now, you will get a same or a better rate. So that's the, that's the choice that we have on, in, with this right now, especially when you're dealing with a commodity like energy. So that's kind of the choice.
So which, which choice are you recommending?
So I'm going to ask for, well, go ahead. I'm sorry, Chris. You wanted to add to that?
I think with, if we can lock in for three years at a very, very raw price right now, I think, you know, I think three years from now, as the economy rebounds, the longer we get away from this, what's going on, I think the price is going to go up. So I'm kind of leaning towards a three-year lock myself, but.
Give you a rate for the third year or no?
It's the same one, it'd be the same rate.
No, it's not.
No, it's not.
Years is a touch higher at a third of.
I'm looking at.
But I think Chris's point is that even at a third of the penny higher for a three-year term, it's still a lot lower than what it might be later this year or next year or whatever, considering the, the commodities market right now. Is that correct, Chris?
Yeah, that's kind of where I'm trying to weigh the decision here. I mean, if we want to go for the immediate big savings, I also get 24, fine, I'll go either way. I was just, that's the kind of explanation that I was trying to put forth to everybody else.
I know, you know, on one hand, it's kind of hard to imagine that oil prices are going to get much lower in, from 25 to 36 months out. But at the same time, who would have predicted what's happening right now? So, you know, we have to make a decision. So the first decision should be 24, 36 months, and then we know what the rate is, and then we can make the motion.
And just, just to point out, as you can see, our current plan doesn't expire till November and she's reaching out now. So she stays on top of this. And if, you know, if you do decide, decide on the 24-month one, this time in two years from now, which is, you know, November, about four months before November, right? Did I do that math right? No, I didn't. But anyway, you know what I mean. She'll reach out to us and say, you know, the rates are such and such, maybe you should renew now kind of thing, like she did this time.
All right, so.
I'm good with the 24 then, that's okay.
Yeah, 24.
That's what I was going to ask for a motion. So I'm going to ask for a motion for, for ERC for 24 months at a cost of 0.05706. Is that correct, Des? I'm just reading off the sheet here.
That is correct.
Okay, just to make sure we're all on the same page, so to speak, and to authorize me as the mayor to sign a contract for 24 months with Energy Resource Corporation.
Make that motion.
Okay, so that was Jesus.
I'll second.
That was Tara with the second. Any, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Anyone opposed?
Tim, I, Tim, I'm going to email you because it, because it's a day-to-day thing. I'm going to email you that contract now.
I'll print it.
No, you have, you have to do it electronically.
Okay.
So I'm going to email it to you now. If you can just follow the directions in her email, that would be great.
I'll do it tonight before I leave the office.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, moving on, continuing with new business. So we need to have a discussion with regard to places of worship and a temporary restraining order at 20 Bennington Drive. So correspondence was received from the building inspector Gary Thomasberger in March, as we all know, regarding a case that he has in Woodbury Justice Court involving a place of worship being conducted at 20 Bennington Drive. At that time, back in March, the case was supposed to be held, but obviously it was rescheduled until June due to the COVID issues. The courts then closed altogether. So since there's an unknown as to when the court system will reopen, Gary is requesting us to authorize special counsel Brian Nugent to file a temporary restraining order with the Orange County Supreme Court to force the owners to not allow the use of the premises for a place of worship. Obviously, as things start to loosen up, this might become more of an issue than it has been over the past few weeks. So Clerk Desiree Potvin asked the building inspector Thomasberger if the issue still persists, and he informed her that it's currently not, but believes that when New York laws is lifted, it might continue, as I just said. So he added that since there's an unknown as to when the case may be rescheduled before the Woodbury Justice Court, Gary would like to have us pursue a temporary restraining order with special counsel. So I'm asking for a motion in a second to authorize special counsel Brian Nugent to file a temporary restraining order with the Orange County Supreme Court to force the owner of 20 Bennington to not be allowed to use the premises for a place of worship. So we'll do a motion in a second and then have some discussion.
I'll make that motion.
So Chris made the motion.
I'll second it.
That was Andrew with the second. Discussion? No discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. We don't need a roll call on that, right, Des?
Nope.
Very good. That was quick. Request for fee waiver from the town courthouse. This was what Mr. Kraus had a comment on before the meeting started. So building inspector Gary Thomasberger received an email from town supervisor Frank Palermo requesting that any and all fees related to the renovations, repairs and remediation being done to the town courthouse roof be waived. He estimates the total cost of the permits necessary would be $1,621. So I would like a motion to approve the request. But if we want to discuss it before we even do a motion to either approve or to approve or deny that request, I'm open to that as well. So what's the pleasure of the board?
Let's follow protocol and then we can vote, I would assume. Let's do the motions and I would too.
That's fine with me. So can I have, can I have a motion to approve the request then?
Approve it?
I'll make the motion.
To approve the request to waive the fees, yes. So that was Tara making the motion. Can we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so Jesus seconded it. Discussion?
I, I'll make a discussion. I'm intent waiving the fees. I heard what Mr. Kraus said and I understand what Neil is going at, but I've also watched several of the recent town board meetings where the town has found that certain vendors of theirs were doing things for village properties and whatnot, and they, he's been, they've been told to take out anything that has to do with the village. So, you know, two hands wash each other and things go both ways. I don't see it going both ways. I don't see this happening, either going in our direction or whatsoever. So I'm completely against.
Okay.
To the town.
Other comments? All right, so then I'll call the question to a vote. Since there seems to be some yes or no here, Des, can you do a roll call, please?
I certainly can. Mayor Egan?
I vote aye.
Trustee Burke?
No.
Trustee Jacamo, Jacamaza?
No.
Trustee Gomez?
Oh.
Trustee Graziano?
Okay, so the motion is defeated. So then would we need to do a motion to deny it or because of the four to one no vote on the motion to approve?
No, the motion to approve failed, so.
So it is denied automatically. Okay, very good. Moving on then, request for tax exemption status of the village of Curious Joel. So a letter was received from Daniel Hubble, the attorney representing the village of Curious Joel, requesting that the village of Woodbury approve a property tax exemption for the following parcels that they state are for village-owned water systems. And those parcels are two thirds, do we need to read the parcels? I don't think, I don't think we have to actually have to read the parcels. So what I'm looking for is a motion in a second to deny the request received from the village of Curious Joel to exempt certain properties they own in Woodbury. The reason for this denial is that the village of Curious Joel could have acquired the property within its own village through negotiation around a domain to locate their water supply facilities, but chose instead to allow such lands to be developed for residential and commercial purposes to the benefit of their tax base. That would be the basis of the denial.
I'll make the motion to deny it.
I'll make a second on that.
So Chris made the motion, Andrew made the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Anyone opposed? Okay. Moving on. So our grant writers had recommended a resolution for the New York State Climate Smart Community Pledge. And the purpose of this resolution is to be eligible for funding under certain grant opportunities that may be available. And they suggested that the board adopt the Climate Smart Communities pledge. So therefore, I'm requesting a motion in a second to adopt the resolution that Desiree is going to read, adopting the New York State Climate Smart Communities pledge.
Andrew, you're laughing. Don't you want to read it?
Do you want me to read it? That's what I was exactly, how did you read my mind? The pleasure of your job is reading things. I have no problem reading if you want.
Nor do I, I mean.
Okay. Do you want me to do it?
If you want to, if you feel, you're. If you want to, if you feel, you're. So I think you should.
Okay. Um, whereas the village of Woodbury believes that climate change poses a real and increasing threat to our local and global environments and is primarily due to the burning of fossil fuels, and whereas the effects of climate change will endanger our infrastructure, economy, and livelihood, harm our farms, orchards, and ecological communities, including native fish and wildlife populations, spread, spread invasive species and exotic diseases, reduce drinking water supplies and recreational opportunities, impose health threats to our citizens. And whereas we believe that our response to climate change provides us with an unprecedented opportunity to save money and to build livable and energy-independent and secure communities, vibrant innovation economies, health and safe schools, and resilient infrastructures. And whereas we believe the scale of greenhouse gas emissions reductions required for climate stabilization will require sustained and substantial efforts. And whereas we believe that even if emissions were dramatically reduced today, communities would still be required to adapt to the effects of climate change for decades to come. It is hereby resolved that the village of Woodbury, in order to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and adapt to a change-changing climate, adopts the New York State Climate Smart Communication Communities Pledge, which compromises the following ten elements. Build a climate smart community. Envire inventory emissions set low and plan for a climate action. Decrease energy use. Shift to clean renewable energy. Use climate smart materials management. Implement climate smart land use. Enhance community resilience to climate change. Support a green innovation economy. Inform and inspire the public. Engage in evolving process of climate action. And that's it.
Okay, so we have the motion in a second. So we did not have the motion in a second.
I'll make that.
Ago. So Jesus made the motion.
I'll second it.
Andrew seconded the motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Not about aye.
I just want to say, I think it's great that you guys are really taking advantage of this great writer. I think he's going to do some great things for our community and and save us money, which is desperately needed.
I agree. I'm really looking forward to seeing what these people can do for us. And and based on what they've done for other communities that we've reached out to prior to signing that contract, I have high expectations. All right, so now we need to talk about the draft MS four annual report that's available currently on the website for viewing. Um, so like to talk about our speedies permit. The state pollutant discharge elimination system or speedies permit uh procedures require that us as the village, as an operator of a regulated municipal separate storm sewer system or MS four, uh file an annual report to maintain permit coverage. A draft of the annual report for the period ending March ninth, twenty twenty, has been posted to the website for public information and comment. Uh, the report complies with the DEC mandatory format. The final report will be filed with the state prior to the June first deadline. Um, so moving on, liability insurance proposal. This was added earlier this week. Uh, and I'd like a motion in a second to authorize me as the mayor to sign the fiscal year twenty twenty slash twenty twenty one liability insurance policy renewal in the amount of one hundred and forty one thousand, two hundred dollars and thirty cents with Marshals Sterling.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, so Andrew and Tara. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Not aye. Anyone opposed? Okay. So that concludes regular business. Uh, I will uh go through one by one the people that are in the audience for public comment. So I'll start with Mr. DeLuca. I am, you do you have any comments, sir?
No, I'm all good. Thank you.
Thank you, Tommy. Sandy?
Um, yes, under old business B, local law number two. It sounded like when you asked for the motion that you said local law number five.
It is local law. It's adopted local law five, introductory local law two.
Right.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sandy, any other questions? Okay. Krause's, Mr. and Mrs.'s?
No, I'm good.
And I just, I just want to uh emphasize again that when you go into discussion on the local law regarding the uh water protection overlay, that you not, I mean, it could be not to be have a pun, but throw away the baby with the with the with the water. Is, I think we did a pretty good start on it back in the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, and I would hope that you wouldn't go back and start everything from the beginning. You would build on that, maybe tweak it a little bit, but you would really uh work on that. I think that's an important law.
I agree with Andrew's thumbs up there. Thank you. Anything else, Neil?
No.
Okay, Mr. and Mrs. Perino?
I'm good.
Sure, I'd like to say something.
Go ahead, Chris.
I'd like to bring up the uh Woodbury pool. I don't know how you guys are up on any of this or if you've been watching what's been going on. But I don't seem to understand why anybody in Woodbury can even consider any type of these proposals. I mean, this pool project has been brought to the community. It was presented. Um, it wasn't properly presented to begin with. Okay, um.
I'm having difficulty hearing him. There's a lot of echo.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. Are you near it?
They had two devices there. I just muted an iPad that was on. Go ahead.
Okay, okay. The last thing I was able to understand was that you don't think it was properly presented to begin with.
I don't think it was properly presented to begin with.
I think they've muted the wrong person.
Nope, I can hear him.
We can hear him.
Okay.
Your sense.
Okay, good.
Good.
I, for one, um didn't like the way this was presented to the taxpayers to begin with. Uh, people also didn't care for the way that the pool project was brought up and pushed through by the supervisor and board um during the election year. Uh, and then when people expressed their great concerns about what was going on, um, the town board decided to use old town law, which I don't, or code, I should say, that I don't understand why it still exists, to remove park and recreation commissioners. Okay, um, and appoint them to a committee. Now, I don't know if you know the definition between commissioners and a committee. Commissioners are appointed to be the voice of the people, where a committee is the voice of the government. That is just a way of getting rid of any uh troublemakers.
Opposition.
Or anybody that doesn't want to get along with. Um, now there are various concerns um from the community that have surfaced with the town board, and uh they attempted to quickly push this through. And in a feeble attempt, try to appease the community with these uh proposals that they put together. Okay, I attended the only meeting back in October, and I also attended last night for their virtual meeting. Uh, people aren't getting their concerns addressed. And everything is pointing back to the original three point five million dollar pool project. Okay, um, I don't know why they didn't vet more uh engineers or come up with more uh designs of this pool or get more input from the people to begin with. All right, this is a big project for the people of Woodbury. This three point five million dollar project is going to turn out to be a seven million dollar project over the fifteen year. Okay, it's going to cost you more taxes, and this three point five, according to the supervisor last night, is only for the pool. All the infrastructure work needs to be done, too. I'm not aware, I don't think the people in Woodbury know exactly what this entails. Okay, um, that pool was just a water hole back in the day turned into a pool. Now they're planning on putting a brand new pool, which is long overdue, on top of this water hole, which has springs, has water issues. Uh, it's going to turn up a lot of problems. Um, I don't think that they're presenting it properly or getting enough input from the people. And they're using the inconvenience factor to get the public to push this three point five million dollar price deck through.
There's some tapping going on, I'm sorry?
No, it's not on my end. I got a reverb on my end.
Okay.
Okay, um, the surveys are a good idea, but uh they're not set up correctly. I mean, you had pools one, three, and four. You have no pool number two. We have no idea where those plans are or why they were pulled. The town, uh, the town paid for them. The people paid for them. They should see those plans. They have no no vote in their survey. They used the word, you can check it off in the other box. But when you look at that survey, people who aren't keeping up with this are just going to pick one of the three because they don't realize they have a choice no. Okay. The people asked for a lot of different things, including a pool that would be less than three point five, uh, three point five million. When that was asked last night to the supervisor, his answer was vote no. And that's not what we asked for. Okay, um, I'm also concerned with the the uh talk around town that the pool will be closed um for a day here and there to allow exclusive access to those of one religious background. I mean, technically, they are taxpayers, and they're going to have the right to use that pool. So these are issues that haven't been discussed yet. Uh, there are so many other questions that need to be answered here. Um, and people who are, uh, how can I put it? People who don't have access to the public meetings or have access to going to them because of what's going on right now are not going to be informed properly. They're going to use the surveys to decide which pool plan they're going to go with. And I told you before, when you look at these pool plans, everything sends you back to the original three point five that this board wanted to approve to begin with. You know, and after looking at the proposals that were put together, I kind of laughed after reading them the the first ten, fifteen minutes. Because, and I'll go over it quickly because I don't want to take too much of your time. But pool number one's eleven thousand square feet, and it's supposed to cost us the original three point five million dollars, which is three hundred dollars a square foot. Okay, and it's probably going to be in a tax range of ninety dollars a year annual. Okay, I believe we have anywhere between five and seven thousand properties in Woodbury. So on a conservative end, that's five thousand five thousand homes will use to tax annually. Um, the second pool is thirteen thousand feet for four point five million dollars, which happens to be almost seventeen hundred feet more than the first pool. A million dollars for seventeen hundred more feet?
Square feet.
To, uh, well, yeah, square feet. Okay, to accommodate thirty nine more people? I mean, uh, that's the excess of five hundred seventy two thousand dollars. And the square footage went up. In commercial projects, square footage is supposed to go up. It's supposed to go down with bigger the project. At the very least, pool number two should have stayed at three hundred square feet, which would have saved you significantly thousands and hundreds of thousands and thousands of dollars. Now, pool number four is only put in there for eight point five million dollars because that's the ridiculous, that's the ridiculous uh pool to look at. That pool would be as big as the original pool, which people don't seem to understand. You didn't use all that pool to begin with. All right, it was too big. So everything leads you back to the original three point five. But there's still so many other concerns. The bond started out with little and no tax money and turned into taxed. Like I said before, the three point five is only for the pool. Where do we get all the other infrastructure money? The town is still hiring more police. They're still building other rec centers and things at the rez, which I don't even know how much he spent on that when he should have used that money for the pool to begin with. Okay, I for one don't think residents should push this through. I think they should do more homework on it. Okay, and I don't think they're informed properly. Typing in questions and concerns isn't the way to do this. People with some experience in building should be asking questions to this engineer. All right, they didn't vet an engineer. They just chose this one guy. Now, here he's a halfway decent engineer. I've spoken to people that have worked with him. But not one of the people that I've spoken with can confirm that he's built a pool this size. I don't think anybody went out to see any of the pools that he's built this size. Then you also have to worry about when he goes out to bid with contractors because uh I don't know if you're using gunite or shot creep. Now, I don't know if you realize what those materials are. That's what they use to build pools, and only certain contractors are talented enough to use it. We don't know what the guarantee is on this pool. You're not going to know it until it goes out to bid. All right, uh, it's a new pool. You're going to need uh better insurance. The insurance should go up. The pump station should change. I think they're wasting a lot of land pushing the pool to one side. I brought up the dirt testing that was going to be brought in there, and the supervisor told me the dirt was good. It came from exit one thirty. I don't think we have an exit one thirty. I think what he met was one thirty one from the traffic department, which still doesn't mean anything to me. It should have been tested or be tested if it's going to be put there where our families are. I'm just trying to bring up all the concerns and questions that I think people should be asking for this three point five million dollar project, which, like I said before, over the course of fifteen years, with the tax base, will be close to a six million dollar project. Um, that's really all I have to say about this. I appreciate the way you gave me time to speak about this at the meeting, and I hope more people in Woodbury take this into consideration.
We need an open venue.
We do need an open venue. I think we need a very large open venue. This is a project that has been, money's been thrown at it on two different occasions that I know of, and it was never done correct. I'm all for having a pool. I enjoy the pool and my kids a little. I don't go that often, but I think the town should have a pool. The taxpayers of Woodbury should have a pool. I don't think they have the right people looking into this project. They need to get some people with construction backgrounds in there. Okay, and start asking these questions. Everything looks great on paper, but when it comes time to build it, it's a whole different world. The other thing is, is this pool is only open for approximately ten weeks a year. And I think that the director of Parks and Recreation said that there's only twenty thousand people that go to this pool, which really works out to be about two hundred and fifty to three hundred, three hundred people a day. It's, uh, you know, three point five million dollars is a lot of money for three hundred people a day. Okay, um, I think we need a bigger open venue. I think the village should suggest it to the town. I know the town can pretty much do whatever they want because they control the Park and Recreation Department.
We need more dialogue.
But you need more dialogue for this. Yeah, definitely. Okay, um, thank you for your time.
Thanks for your comments. Uh, I'm going to go to Mr. Brady. Did I already ask you?
You did not, but I have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. And Mr. Gerber?
Get a lot of reverb. It's like echoing.
Okay. I don't see anything from Mr. Gerber. I think that's everybody that was on the pool. Uh, so at the so at this point, I'm going to move out to a board member comment. I'm going to go straight to Chris.
Oh, thank you. Um, my, okay. Um, I just want to say, you know, first of all, thank you. I'm looking forward to um to when we start reopening. I'm watching the numbers, and we hit five out of seven metrics going forward. So I'm looking forward to hopefully with the next couple of weeks hitting those last two metrics, even though we ticked up a little bit in the hospitalization rate today over the last few days, but I'm looking forward to really hitting those. Um, I'm also really thankful, and now I've said this before, I wrote this before, but I'm going to say it again, to work with this group and this board because we're getting a lot of things done. And this is kind of what we all signed up for, is to help Woodbury and to get things done for Woodbury and to work together to move Woodbury, you know, as somebody said earlier tonight, in a forward direction. And we are doing that. And, you know, I said it a lot during when Tara and I were running for office last year.
It felt like I was on a stage again with a guitar.
Please mute it. Go ahead.
We wanted to earn everybody.
We wanted to earn everybody's vote, and I'm hoping that we're earning, and hoping this entire board is earning it, and I think our board is earning, you know, the ability to work together for years to come, and get the things done, and push Woodbury into a really good direction, a really good place. So again, thank you to all the residents of Woodbury, and I really appreciate working with this board. I think we have a lot of good things that we can, to accomplish going into the future.
Thanks, Chris. Jesus?
This week is Police Week, and I wanna thank all my fellow police officers out there, past present, and those that are going to join future ones. I bless you most, because times are very different from the time when I was on the job, so thank you all for them, and also the other first responders, paramedics, the firemen, and all those now that are essential workers, who can also bring themselves out there for us, especially in this time of the pandemic. So please, you get a chance, thank, thank whoever you can, because you thank you, and please, goes a long way. Sometimes you go through your job, and you don't feel appreciated, you go, why the heck am I doing this, for people that don't care about you, everyone's against you, everyone can Monday, Monday night quarterback you, everyone has the opinion, everyone tells you how to do your job, the moment you speak up, someone's got a phone or camera or something up in your face, telling you how you should act, how you should behave, what you should be. So if you get a chance, just say thank you, please, by all means, it means a lot to us. My last show it in our face, or our expressions, or what we move, but it does hit close to home, when you bring it home, you feel good about finally getting up every morning, or every night, whatever your tour is, and going back out and doing the job for them, for all. I think this is how this alone inspired me to keep, continue giving back to the community after I retired, that's why I joined, and please, all you out there, all first responders and all those essential workers, please be safe, I bless you all, and continue your jobs, and always make sure to get home, I bless all you.
Thank you, Jesus. Nicely said. Tara?
I want to first offer condolences to our village clerk Desiree and her husband Timothy on the passing of Timothy's mom a few weeks back, and I hope that you're all remaining strong, I know it's difficult, so I'm sorry for you, for you all.
Thank you.
I want to thank everybody for attending tonight, and also for those who are gonna be watching the meeting later on, I hope that everybody and their families are remaining healthy and safe as we navigate through our new normal. We're just about at the two month mark of being in quarantine, and while it has been challenging for many, it's also been a time for reflection on your priorities, on where you would like to focus your efforts, spending more time with family, different types of opportunities to capitalize on while you have the time to do it. To that end, as I mentioned at our previous meeting, I've been focusing a lot of my time on learning about community preservation, and ways to accomplish this goal here in Woodbury. And at the last village board meeting, we discussed forming a land preservation committee, and we are currently accepting letters of interest from our residents, which can be submitted to our village clerk, Desiree, via email from now until June fifth at four P.M. I urge anyone who is interested in preserving the landscape of our beautiful village to please consider giving your time to this vitally important committee. If, if you would like to, to see a Woodbury, you have a vision in your head, this is, this is the time to step up and volunteer. So that's all I really wanted to say, and I just hope that there's a significant amount of interest from different groups of people, from different backgrounds, perspective is interesting and it's good. So thank you all, be well, and stay safe.
Thank you, Tara. I just wanna, just briefly say that I wanna join Chris and everybody else in expressing gratitude, happiness, in that the, the COVID crisis seems to be on the other side of things, but just to put things into perspective a little bit with regard to PPE, personal protection, things of that nature, the infection rate for healthcare workers, and keep in mind, these healthcare workers, we're seeing, paramedics, my services down in Rockland County, the hospitals in Rockland, the hospitals in the city, we're seeing exponentially greater numbers of people, of patients, and all of those patients were either suspected or positive COVID patients, but the infection rate for healthcare workers, for the most part, was at or below the infection rate for the general public. So what does that mean? That means that PPE worked. Where am I going with this? Keep wearing masks, because wearing masks definitely saved people from getting this virus, or any other virus, and it saved lives. So when you're out in public, follow the advice of the governor, whether you agree with him or not, follow the advice of, of the healthcare profession. That's number one. Number two, the hospitals had been extremely overcrowded, but that is no longer the case. The hospitals in the Hudson Valley region are not quite back to normal, but they can see patients in their emergency departments without risking other people, so don't not go to the hospital because you're concerned about COVID or anything else. If you feel you need to go to the hospital, go to the hospital, this is a public health issue. And, you know, as things start to loosen up, as Chris mentioned, we hit five out of the seven metrics, and I heard somebody else earlier in the day tell me six, but I hadn't seen that written yet, but it's, it's just a matter of time before we hit all seven metrics for the Hudson Valley region, to be able to start the reopening or the unpausing of New York in our region. And that, as everybody knows, is gonna be done in four phases, so phase one would start, whether it starts next week or the week after, whenever it's going to be, continue to take the precautions that you've been taking, wash your hands, wear a mask, things of that nature. And that's really all I had to say, I don't wanna talk anymore, I wanna move on to the rest of the meeting. So Desiree, do you have anything you'd like to say?
I, I think you missed Andrew.
I thought Andrew already went. My apologies, you're right, I did, I went, I apologize.
He does usually speak the longest, so we can.
Well, I, you know, I was seeing him at the top of the screen, and he's just right to my, sorry, Andrew, please, go ahead. You're muted.
Your pause, your mute.
Unmute yourself.
Already done.
You're done, all right.
Yeah, there you go. So, as I was gonna say, in humanities boredom with the being quarantined, we had the creation of the autism challenge, and if you haven't seen it, I would suggest you, you pull it up on, on YouTube, okay? When the internet, when people and social media are working together, you get things like the ALS Ice Bucket Challenge, which helped raise millions for Lou Gehrig's disease. And then sometimes, when it's not working, you get crud like the Autism Challenge on TikTok. Since Jesus and I's election, we have tried to play a role in raising autism awareness. Last year, we became the first municipality to introduce the Think Differently Initiative, and I am proudly a member of Steve Newhouse, Orange County Executive Steve Newhouse's Think Differently Committee. Neither of us have a child with autism, but we can clearly understand, you know, the challenges by, by those with children on the autism spectrum. Part of this, I'm borrowing from somebody else, but it's horrible that anyone would take joy in making fun of a group of people over something they can't control. It saddens me to think that society would intentionally mock a group of people that try so very hard to be the best version of themselves, and often require lots of support, just to live their lives on a daily basis. People with autism have feelings, they can be the sweetest, most honest and loving people you will ever meet. They want nothing more than to be understood, accepted, and included in this world, just like everybody else. That's what makes this TikTok Autism Challenge so disturbing. On our Facebook page, Jacomaza Gomez, I'm gonna be posting some information how you can help remove this garbage from various social media platforms and apps. Together, we can make a difference, all right? Together, we can make a better tomorrow, and I won't lose my faith in humanity because of garbage like this. So, thank you, Jesus Gomez, for choosing to protect and serve, and Chris Perino, if you're still on there, thank you as well, and to all the cops in Woodbury, thank you as well. That's it.
Thank you.
Okay, Desiree?
Uh, yeah, I wanna first thank the public friends, coworkers, and family for reaching out to my husband and I during this difficult time. He is, he's coping well, thank goodness. This coronavirus, although has been a detriment to many people, for us, it has been a, I wanna say quote unquote, somewhat of a blessing, because it gave us a lot of time that we were able to do things that we normally would not have been able to do had both of us had been working the forty hours a week plus that we do. We were able to get a lot of things done for our family, and I thank everybody who reached out to us. I also just wanna recognize that last week was municipal clerks' week, so I wanna, yay, so I wanna recognize your municipal clerks, which doesn't just include Jessica, me, and Claudia, it also includes all of your municipal clerks. And I had promised Andrew I would put something together for him, but I fell short trying to catch up on work this week, since I was out last week due to bereavement, but I wanna recognize the passing of Louise Cupchak. Louise was a longtime employee of both the town and then the village. She started out in the town clerk's office as a deputy town clerk, and then she became the zoning board secretary, and she, I believe, worked over thirty, forty, forty something years, I don't, I wish I had the information, I never had a chance to look it up, I was very busy doing notaries this week, which is long to do virtually, I have to tell you. But Louise was a great woman, and she, she will be greatly missed, and she did a lot for this, this town as the roles that she had, so just wanna recognize that, and I think that's all I have to say.
Desiree, just, just make sure you get me something, so I can.
I will, I will, I'm sorry, I know I promised to do it.
No, no, it's okay. It's okay. She was my first zoning board secretary when I joined, so for those who are new to the board, this was a woman when I joined, which was, say, five years ago, was still using whiteout, and.
And a typewriter.
And a typewriter. So the minutes would be produced not via computer, they would get, you would get a sheet, would all be, the lines would be offline and everything else like that, so very old school.
She was the clerk when I was on the ZBA also, she was great.
Yeah, she was.
She was the resource, nobody else on that board, not the attorney, nobody, she was the resource, she was great.
Absolutely.
All right, Desiree, anything else?
No, but one funny little note, although may not be.
Oh, there is something else.
Yeah, yes, one funny little note, although it may not be completely appropriate. Couple of years ago, and I'm talking like ten, fifteen years ago, I was going through some old files, doing some records management purging, and I came across an old notebook that Louise had used to take minutes from a town board meeting. I don't know who was on the board at the time, so it's not gonna, no one's gonna know who I'm talking about, but she would write things like, and then the beep beep, I'm not gonna say what she wrote, said the following, and I was like, oh dear.
I've heard this story.
Yes. So she definitely was a character.
She was one of a kind, one of a kind woman.
Probably my queen, and she was talking about, right?
He was on the planning board, not the zoning board.
Alan, you have anything before we adjourn? Okay, so then with no further business to discuss, I'd like a motion in a second to adjourn the meeting, and we go into attorney-client session.
I'll make that motion.
All right, Jesus raises hand first, and then Andrew with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, I'll end the recording now.